The time is now 5:20 and I will call this meeting of the VIA Board of Trustees to order, and we will begin with a moment of reflection for our new CEO as he begins to lead this organization and all of our staff, consultants, and our board. Mr. Art, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which reigns in its one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First of all, I'd like to thank the Board for their vote of confidence, and I took a poll of the Board informally, and the vote was that I not perform the happy dance, so I am not going to do that this evening. I'm sorry, but that... For my report, I would just like to read a letter from Nicholas Langella, who's the General Manager of the Alamo Dome. Dear Mr. Art, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you and your staff for the excellent job they performed for the George Drake Concert on June 1st. This was the largest event in the 20-year history of the Alamo Dome with 73,206 people in attendance. We truly faced momentous challenges with parking, traffic, and construction issues, to name a few, but VIA Park and Ride Services transported our patrons to and from the Alamo Dome efficiently and effectively. I commend all of your employees for their dedication and hard work which made this event a huge success. Just like to say that we had 100 buses slated for this event, we ended up operating over 200. We had operators that would come off their job in the evening, on a Saturday evening, ready to go home, that accepted the challenge, I'd say, to stick around, go back out, help carry folks home, and delay their return home until 1 or 2 in the morning. And that's just a testament to this organization that I'm very proud to lead. Thank you.
Item number four, citizens to be heard.
Mr. Chairman, we have seven citizens to be heard tonight. As your name is called, please come up to the front to make your comments. If you'd rather make your comments from where you sit, please raise your hand and the microphone will be brought to you. Damon Mason.
Citations, VIA trustees. It is I, Damon Mason. I am here for two main reasons. The first is that your... This epilogue here, your response letter, is not satisfactory. The things that I brought to your attention was, you know, dealt with the northbound VIA Primo after it has left downtown, and its reliance on the lower level I-10, which has been flooded out. Directing Route 14 through Randolph Park Ride as an intermediate destination, modifying the northern portion of Route 14 around the FM 2252 to Thousand Oaks area, and of course in the safety issue with the Westside Multi-Mile Transit Center. I'm not... I'm just... It is suicide because of the proximity to the Haven Hope Homeless Shelter. It is suicide to wait at the Westside Multi-Mile Transit Center without a gun. Yeah, that's just how I feel about it. Now, here's a second issue, and I've been trying to ponder this. If the United States Federal Reserve does something incredibly stupid that completely nullifies the utility of the US dollar as the world reserve currency, which means you will not be able to do anything, what contingency plans does VIA have in place?
Manuel Garcia.
I'm also here just to speak about this, my reaction about this multi-mile transit center. You know, forgetting so far your plan, why build it now? And, okay, so, the point when I went inside at the Westside Multi-Mile Transit Center, I mean, I think it's okay. But I think on this side at the Multi-Mile Transit Center, it shouldn't be shopping, especially like educational activity. Now, perhaps, perhaps on the other side at the Multi-Mile Transit Center, which, I'm not sure if there'll be more buses into this transit hub, but it's not just a multi-mile transit center, but it's mostly the Robert Thompson Transit Center. Now, I'm not sure how many buses it's going to be, especially the Primo and the regular route. And I'm not sure how many Primo buses it's going to be, but it's not just the Robert Thompson, but also the Westside Multi-Mile Transit Center.
Willie May Clay.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about three elements related to paratransit and in a way to the mainline bus. One, I was here last month, and I told you that the call notification system had not been working. I need to say, as of today, there has been an improvement. It is now back on track, but it needs to be tweaked just a little bit, because it isn't, in my opinion, calling far enough in advance. For example, I've seen three situations within a week. In my case, the call system was activated two minutes prior to the arrival of the van. I've been on the van when someone was boarding, and then the phone rang. That happened on two occasions, so it needs to be improved, but it's working. Secondly, I want to talk about this issue of penalties. It's the dispatcher's responsibility, and I know, to counsel the trip, but it's the driver's involvement initially with the individual that communicates with the dispatcher. It's not enough to train the individuals, whether it's mainline or whether it's paratransit, with the idea of security and sensitivity. It's important that the person comes to the situation, both rider and driver, with a positive respectful attitude. And I find that we're running into situations out there where attitudinal barriers are in place, and we need to work on that. And thirdly, I'm concerned about persons getting penalized, and VIA is maintaining a list, and the person isn't being called until after the person has accrued three penalties. I think we need to do a little something about that, because, you know, this service of paratransit is a necessity for the quality of life for individuals, and it's also an opportunity for VIA to provide quality service. I thank you for this opportunity, and I'm glad that the call notification system is working.
Ferris Hodge.
I want to say congratulations to our new CEO. I had to do an open records request to find out how much you're making, but I will do that. Now, when y'all have y'all's minutes approved, how can we get a copy of it? Y'all always approve stuff, but we never get a copy. You know, y'all ought to have something in the back where we can get a copy of that. And that was good, what y'all talking about the West Mar drill. That's fine and good, but the biggest problem is VIA Trans, the notification. How can you notify somebody in five minutes? And sometimes it takes 10 or 15 minutes for them to get out the door, put on their coat and whatnot. So it should be notified in 15 minutes, give them a chance at least to get to the curb. So it's not working for us, I'm concerned. The fare box, all of that money should be going toward giving your retirees a pay raise. You know, they gave you the big pay raise, and that's fine. You're the CEO, you deserve it. I'm not going to knock that. But you have people that retired 15, 20, 25, and 30 years, and they haven't had a pay raise in the last four and a half years. Shame on VIA. You have people that's working part-time, they didn't get a pay raise this year. Shame on VIA. Y'all have to do a better job than what y'all been doing in the past. As far as advertisement, I asked the question, how much money do VIA make off of the advertisement? And VIA still haven't told me. When y'all had y'all's budget, and Mr. Smith, or whatever his name is, I wanted to look and see how much money VIA was making off of that. You know, he holds the book, and he won't let us look at the book. And I don't think it's right for VIA to hire stuff from us and put it under miscellaneous. That's not right, VIA. We have the right to know where all that money's going. The Primo bus, I'm still not happy with it bouncing up and down, but we can live with it. The 95 bus, I rode it a couple of times. It is picking up a lot of people with wheelchairs. The biggest gripe that the people are saying, that bus should stop where the Primo bus. It should make every stop going down Fredericksburg Road, and then it should go all the way to the medical center. The 520 bus, it should just go to Crossroads, because there's more people coming from downtown that wants to go to the medical center than it is riding the 520. The next thing, 520 is always running late. There's two or three buses in the back of each other. The red route, this evening around about 4:30 or 5:00, four buses, four trailers in the back of each other. Why do y'all have buses? Even your regular buses, two or three in the back, if they run late, VIA don't turn them back downtown or go all the way out the route. You have two or three buses in the back of each other, so you're losing money doing that. Now, y'all did improve y'all's drivers, because I say a lot of time we speak to them, they won't say nothing. So I talked to the guy over the VIA bus drivers, and he talked to them. They have to respond to us. They have to say, "Good morning, good evening," kiss my foot, or something, you know, say hello. Not no 30-minute conversation, but, you know, say something. Say ouch, you know, kiss my foot. VIA's having a good day. You're having a good day or a bad day. You know, they get on the bus just mad at the world, you know. So I just need to say this, and then I'm going to stop, okay? It's very important... See, I used to work at JCPenney. We had to speak to everybody coming in that store. Good morning, hello, how you doing? Have a nice day, you know. And that's what we expect out of the VIA bus drivers. That's what we expect out of the VIA bus drivers, to speak to everybody that get on and off the bus. Now, I'm going to give it to... I'm going to give it to homeboy.
Okay, y'all have a good day. We'll come back and we're going to talk about something else. Am I saying something to work out with you?
Good afternoon. My name is Brenda Vickery Johnson, and I'm the President of Vickery and Associates. Do you want to use this? I'm the President of Vickery and Associates. We're a civil engineering consulting firm. I'm here today to present the Board with a National ACEC Award that was received related to the VIA Metropolitan, VIA BRT project. Recently, Vickery and Associates submitted an entry to the American Council of Engineering Companies for the 2013 Engineering Excellence Awards Competition, also known as the Academy Awards of Engineering Industry. The entry was submitted for Vickery's surveying and mapping technology work that we performed along the VIA BRT route. As the project surveyor, Vickery was responsible for mapping the new route. We synthesized complex data and mapped an optimal route that minimized utility relocations and property acquisition costs. I'm very pleased to announce that a distinguished panel of ACEC judges awarded Vickery and Associates and VIA not only the state award, but also the national recognition and gold medal for the VIA Primo Bus Rapid Transit Project based on the project's uniqueness, complexity, originality, and technical value to the engineering and surveying professions, as well as to the community. So with that, I would like to share and present this award to the VIA Metropolitan Transit on behalf of Vickery and Associates and the American Council of Engineering Companies.
Lori Zertucci.
Hello, my name is Lori Zertucci. On June 23rd of 2013, I received a call from ERICO 2107365050. The person left no voicemail message, so I promptly returned the phone call. Nobody answered the phone, so I called the 362-5050 number, and the agents there had no idea who might have called me, and Agent 15 could only guess why they called me, but he himself did not know why I was called. If VIA is going to call their VIA Trans patrons and not leave a voicemail message of any kind, they should do it from a phone number that patrons, when they call that number, somebody will be there to answer the call, instead of the phone ringing and ringing off the wall. Thank you.
Joe McMullin.
Thank you very much. This is Joe McMullin, and the first thing I just wanted to bring up was that sometimes, I know my wife, she catches a VIA Trans, and what she does is when she calls, she tells them what time she wants to be there at the particular... Like, she has an appointment at 2:00, she tells them she has to be there at 2:00 or something. And so sometimes, they'll schedule it way before, and then take her straight over there, so she has to wait out outside in the heat, which is, you know, this time of year is kind of rough, especially if the place is closed and not open yet. Another thing I'd like to bring up is that the... I noticed that most of the numbers of the bus stops are way up high, and me, I'm a short little guy, so... And I'm also visually impaired, so it's hard for me to see those signs and read the numbers. So whenever I'm at a bus stop and I call in and say, "Well, you know what time the bus is going to be here," or whatever, they say, "Well, what's your bus stop number?" Well, I can't give it to them, because I can't read it. So I just wondered if they could lower those signs more to eye level, to those people with eye levels, if there's any way in the future they can do that. And I guess that's all I've got. Thank you very much, and I enjoy the service.
There are no more citizens to be heard.
Thank you. That brings us to... We're going to go ahead and call up item number seven, which is, "Agendize as a public hearing on fee simple acquisition." The time is now 5:40, and we'll officially open this public hearing on item number seven, fee simple acquisition of the property at 8:19, West Laurel Street, San Antonio, Texas, and Bear County, as further described on our agenda. Mr. Buchanan.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. I'm going to recuse myself on this item, as I have some relatives who have interest in the area.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, before we allow public comment tonight, I'd like to just give a little background of the property in which we are speaking about this evening. 8:19 West Laurel is right outside the campus of VIA here at the corner of Fredericksburg Road and the VIA campus there. It is a property that is commonly known as Five Points. It is an area of vacant land that currently has one bus shelter associated with it. It is one of our top 10 highest boarding locations on the system. There's a lot of activity at this general location. It also is in a floodplain within the floodplain mapping. Just a couple pictures before the public comment. I mentioned the boardings that happened out here. You can see there is a lack of amenities at this general location. There's generally a queuing of buses that occur at this general location. There's also a high transfer location for VIA Metropolitan Transit, and there are very little amenities out here. This was actually yesterday and this morning we took these pictures, but many times there is a lot more patrons out here than this and a lot more bus traffic. Once again, just some continued pictures of the existing conditions out there. VIA is looking to make improvements in this general location that would relate to shelters, amenities, possible maneuvering of the buses out of traffic to allow right-hand turns, some things we're looking at, and just make the area generally more pleasing and more amenities for our patrons that are waiting at this location. So with that, I would ask that if there are any citizens to be heard?
Mr. Chairman, we have two citizens to be heard. The first citizen is Candida Ramidis.
Good afternoon. My name is Candida Ramidis, and I am against VIA purchasing this property. This property has been in my family for over 80 years. Some of you are old enough to remember that there used to be the Repeat at Pete's Liquor Store there, and there was also the Five Points Cafe, which at that time was the only place in San Antonio where you could get smothered or fried rabbit. The property was condemned over 20 years ago because VIA at that time wanted to make a right-hand turn accessible for their buses so that they could interact with that very busy intersection. We fought and fought and fought, and we lost. The property was condemned, and three very good viable buildings were torn down. So now, the family has been trying to stay and hang on to the property, because we knew that at one point or another, it was going to get the acknowledgement and the visibility that it had in prior years. We knew that that corner, because of the amount of traffic, would become not a boom area again of San Antonio, but at least it would regain, reclaim some of the majestic history that it has there. I could go on for several more minutes and tell you about the cattle drives that used to go by there, water the cattle before they went to the stockyards. There are many interesting things about the property, but the main thing that you need to know today is that the family is against VIA purchasing the property. We wish to hang on to it. We think that there is viability in the neighborhood, and we want to be part of the neighborhood. I also would like to add that I grew up in that area. I lived on top of the liquor store there for many, many years, and so basically my roots are there. And I thank you for your time.
Can y'all hear me? Okay, I'm going to talk and sing. You are my sunshine. Now, I think that property need to be bought. My only sunshine. The reason it need to be bought, VIA need that land. That area is dangerous. You have two and three buses in the back of each other. You have people getting on and off, and they going too far down. So that's the reason I am supporting that. I wanted VIA to buy that whole block where that building is, and VIA said that people never did want to sell that property. And then also, VIA need to buy across the street on North Floris and all that property, because y'all don't have no parking spaces, you know, right now. And y'all need to have more parking. I don't know what y'all plan is for the future, but VIA is hurting for parking space. Y'all need about 500 more parking spaces. So y'all need to buy from North Floris to Fredericksburg Road, all the way down to Ashby Street. And I hope that y'all would keep this in mind, Mr. Manios. I'm trying to talk, but I know you're talking to the boss man next to you. But I think that's rude, because I did listen to you when, you know, when you got your promotion and all that good stuff, so that's good. So I think VIA should do that. Y'all putting a lot of money on that West Mar drill, and that's fine and good, but I would like to see y'all buy at least 150 more buses. We hurting for buses right now. And I don't know why y'all won't buy more buses. Y'all did buy some more VIA Trans vans, and that's good. And anytime y'all can buy a property from, we call it Five Points, all the way down for about eight blocks for the future, because y'all have outgrown this building, you have outgrown the building on Muro and other places. And y'all need to keep everything in one location. Some people say VIA need to expand way out and put a bus terminal. We are in a central location. You can go anywhere you want to go, it's in 45 miles. So I wanted to say that. And that song, "You Are My Sunshine," that's one of the best songs I have ever sung in my life. I'm going to sing that before my time is up. You are my sunshine, my only sunshine. You make me happy when skies are gray, when skies are gray. You never know, dear, how much I love you. Please don't take my sunshine away. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
There are no more citizens to be heard.
Brian, can you come back up? I just wanted... Can you go back to that presentation? Is there a... Can I... Was there a map? Help me understand that better. There is no action for today, right?
There is no action for today, and I just want to reiterate, this is just part of a process. We will always continue to talk to the property owner as we move forward in this process and take feedback. This is just one step in the process.
Is there a... I don't even know what I'm exactly asking for, but have we engaged in some kind of discussion of Five Points? And is there some community design process or some planning process somebody is conducting somewhere to talk about Five Points?
Yes, there is a process that's being talked about with major intersection improvements at that particular location with the city...
Who's conducting it?
City of San Antonio, I believe, is conducting that, Chairman.
Okay. Can you go back? The reason again for this is...
If you look at the property today, it has one bus shelter. We move a lot of people in and out of this location. We have a lot of transfer activity at this location, so we're looking to make improvements for better amenities for our passengers. They currently congregate across the whole piece of land. They utilize the tree as shelter during rain and wind, and they're looking for shade. So we're looking to make improvements across the piece of land to basically give our customers a better experience out here, because there is a lot of activity at this location.
I would love to see some larger explanation or understanding of how this impacts the Five Point neighborhood.
Sure.
I mean, they're right. This is a very important neighborhood that culturally was much more vibrant with all of the investment that the county is going to make in the San Pedro Creek, et cetera. It just seems to me like, for myself, I would like some bigger understanding of the other issues that affect this beyond just our piece of it.
Sure, Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I know my time has expired, but I just would like to make one statement. In the beginning of this process began several years ago, I offered the family congregated, and we offered to give VIA the right to use the property to put any type of amenities that were needed for the ridership. We even told them that we did not want to be paid. Everybody in my family are volunteers. I'm volunteer today. I sit on the Board of Directors for SEV, and I have many years of doing voluntary work. So I believe in sharing with things, good things that have happened in my life with the community, and I know how vital that corner has been for the ridership of VIA. We are there sometimes, just sitting there, waiting for a life change, and I can count the number of people that are at the bus stop waiting. Sometimes at 11 o'clock at night, there've been like 18 people waiting to catch a bus. So it's not... I don't want the Board to feel... So it's not, I don't want the Board to feel that we have not tried to be fair, to try to be approachable, but at this time, I don't think, first of all, the offer is fair, and number two, we did not even consider it. We were considering Via needing to do what they needed to do for the ridership, and we were willing to work with them any way that was feasible. And that's all that I would like to say.
We'll go back to agenda item number five, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? I have a motion by Mr. Pitch and a second by Mr. Lee. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number six, our short-term capital program update. Mr. Buchanan?
Good afternoon, Chairman, and members of the Board. With me this evening is Stan, if you'd like to come up. We would like to update you on the progress we've made on the West Side Multimodal Center Phase Two. This is moving through sixty-five percent design into final design. So I wanted to update you on that program. And hopefully, it is consistent with what we just showed to everybody else. Stan?
Did I do that the right way? Did I need to say, "The time is now five fifty-four, and we're officially closing this public hearing?" And now, we'll go back to item number six.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members, please. Thank you. I wanted just to let you know first and foremost is that the design of the, what's really truly the next great place in downtown and the neighborhood that goes with it is well underway. We're on time. The program is intact, and most important, the vision's intact, and I think also the budget's intact as we move forward. So we are as excited as can be that it is proceeding with a team where we're the only ones that are not local. We have a full complement, and our associate architect, Ford Powell Carson, is very much now leading the pack of drawings. We remain throughout this entire design inspired by the station itself, and the whole design is one that is totally suited to only this place on earth. It couldn't be done anywhere else. And these great organic forms and curves are ones that continue to inspire even the way trash baskets are added or benches are made, et cetera. There's a continuity of design. Clearly, this is much more than what would be a minimal for intermodal. It's expanding to an entire block to provide really a wonderful environment, a great public place, one that is able to accommodate, of course, all the modes of travel as easy and as comfortable as possible with major amenities, direct sightlines, no barriers, one mode to the other, and something that I think would meet, of course, all ADA expectations. But most of all, it's truly comfortable, convenient, and easy to use. It's also, if you remember, one that we've always wanted to connect to downtown, especially through Houston Street, so that it remains connected to and part of the larger fabric. It is, of course, the center of this new district that has always been in the back of everyone's planning, that this is one of the few transit agencies in the country that is thinking about how to integrate land use and transportation planning so that all of the investments are going into promoting and stimulating development. And it all falls within this five-minute circle. You get out of transit, and you can easily walk to any number of blocks, plus the county medical facilities, university, and be able to infill the development, inspired by this central square that becomes the center of a great neighborhood that emerges. We have made a number of transit improvements, probably from the last time we saw you, where we're adding more bus stations on the perimeter blocks. We've also added more stations to the Primo Circle on the left. If you remember, Frio is on the right, Travis is on the top, Houston's on the bottom, and Medina is on the left. So the one other major change to enhance service is to take the streetcars out of the square and move them on the right to be part of Frio so that we have a through station, but still part of the total design as we go forward, one intermodal center. So this is the roof plan, which is now emerging, getting firmer and firmer in constructibility, dimensions, et cetera, but it remains the primary way of thinking about one great integrated design shaped by these beautiful curves, where the garden's in the middle, the transit's on the perimeter, the canopies are providing, of course, shelter, but also a way of making many events happen, day and night, casual celebrations, fiesta time, all this great event place while serving transit first and foremost. The canopy has come under more and more detailed design. The height, just to give you a sense of its proportion, it's a more civic dimension, much, actually, it's the same dimension as what you've just built out at the medical center and the new transit center, which is really quite gracious. And this is the size that you will be able to bring the bus under, but it's not sized as a minimal to fit the bus. It's actually the ability to celebrate and get the same kind of weather protection, sun, and from rain. Primo on Medina, the circle has been made even bigger. We've added two more stations, one on each side. It remains a brand unto itself while related to the other canopies, clearly one that's making more out of the front entrance to the historic station. The streetcars, as I mentioned, are moving over to Frio, so there will be a platform in the middle of the street. The paving, the lighting, the canopy materials, everything from within the square will be carried out onto the Frio Station so that it is one integrated design and enabling people to get on and off the platforms at the ends where they're able to cross safely at the intersections. So this will probably come back in more detail later, but it's all part of it. The plaza plan has always remained, and it's working, to be level except for handling water. You can move in all directions. Under the canopies are a variety of activities. At the bottom on Houston, we see clearly the opportunity for markets, probably weekly markets. On the right near Frio, we see a whole series of opportunities within the column radials for food trucks to come and go and really celebrate food. We're beginning to feel like this square is a great place of food and culture where we have activities, and we're also eating and enjoying being there. We have a lobby that's on the upper right. I don't know how to control this mouse, whatever, but it's, there's a white lobby which is, yeah, right above the food trucks. This is the one place where if you need to, you can be in an air-conditioned space. Everywhere else, you're under the canopy where there are fans moving the air. We think will be very comfortable. I like to think of this white box as a ice cube. It's the place that'll be all glass appropriately on Frio Street. So the ice cube on Frio, I think, is something that people will get. But it's in a perfect position to serve as most of the people in the, using either the streetcar or the high number of buses on Frio itself. Everywhere else is very open. The garden remains in the middle. We're able to have the axes going right down from the upper right through to the dome. We continue, all these principles that we presented to you before remain in place. We're just moving a few things around to reinforce the bigger vision. The upper left-hand corner is where we continue to do mixed-use development, food and beverage, alongside preserving the historic structure at the corner of Medina and Travis. We have added, or actually have developed further, the idea of a vertical marquee on the upper right-hand corner. This is a light tower, a marquee that would help in branding and giving wayfinding to people coming up and down Frio as well as from the highway. We have an opportunity to be visible without a sign, and we're hoping to make this into a beautiful work of art. And we're engaging a local artist who has worked with towers here in San Antonio. He did the Pearl District, et cetera. And we'll be back, of course, with that artwork, but all within the budget. We have the main plaza, which is the most open area, which will be the most used for large events, shows, performance, dancing, we think is clearly part of all this. But also, it could just be a casual place to hang out and do rollerblading or whatever people do these days, and will change. We are building for the next hundred years, this. This is not a minor project. This is something that will engage lots of ideas about public use. In the middle is the garden, where landscape dominates the view. It's a way of collecting stormwater, keeping it on site, using the stormwater to take care of the roots of the trees, so it's the most sustainable way. And it's a beautiful cover with dappled light, and one that people can relax in, wait for their transit, or also just come to spend time in the middle of the new emerging neighborhood. The massing model here is showing you the development further of these canopies, the vertical marquee on the lower right at Frio and Travis, the continuation of the curves around the garden reaching the Primo Circle in front of the historic station. All of this now coming together in a way that preserves these main intentions that we had, where the dome and the Indian sculpture on top remain a primary view all the way through to the far reaches of the block itself. By the way, we continue to mention to people, this is only two minutes from the front steps of the station to the corner of Travis and Medina. It's so short, and all these vistas make everything seem even shorter, which you want to do in transportation. Sustainability remains a big deal, whether it's preservation, shade from the canopies instead of air cooling, solar on top, stormwater, I mentioned, kept on site, lots of bike-share opportunities, all of this designed together, of course, around the most sustainable subject, which is transit. We have also secured ways of adding fencing at fiesta time and other events so that we're able to continue all the transit functions on the perimeter, but begin to use the public space for sponsored events and also for revenue sources in the future. Because many public places throughout the United States are finally realizing they have beautiful environments, and they need revenue for keeping operations going in a quality way for programming all year long. So we are able to gate all this while maintaining transit and give you added sources of opportunities all year long, not just the fiesta time. The materials, the colors are all being formed in the context of the station. It's a kind of a modest restraint, a civic quality to it all. We're not doing anything flashy. We're not doing contrasting colors. There's no reflecting materials. It's something that is within the nature of this historic feeling, and yet adding, of course, a lot of landscape and activities, not just materials. We are beginning to think of a signage program, of storytelling throughout the plaza so that there's more to say about the sustainable practices that are going on, so we're educating the history of the neighborhood, the history of transportation, and of the station itself. And the more I hear of every time I come to public events, I hear more and more about the stories of the West Side and particularly around the station. So there could be a lot of cultural learning here. Just to remind us, the Asequia did go through this block. We are making that a part, although it's abstracted, to remind people that water channels, which were the life of the original growing of vegetables, et cetera, did go into this area, and we will have people walking across kind of metal gratings like the Asequia to keep that idea and memory alive. The branding and identity of the new great place in San Antonio is a significant one. We see the name of this square as having beautiful branding, cutout letters that are very visible on our canopy. What we need is a name. And there's lots of ideas. We keep calling it West Side Multimodal. I have a feeling there's more opportunities in branding or naming than that, although maybe not. We have this idea of this vertical marquee, which was always part of our thinking, but now it's crystallized into a very simple rounded form, one that is visible, not dominating far enough away from the dome and the Indian to not be interfering. In the historic review board, I don't know their exact initials, I forget, they actually encouraged us to go taller. They felt like this was something that added to the importance of this grand square that's being made. At the base of this will be, we think, a newsstand or an information booth that can help to activate it. But the column is really a beautiful light source, an artwork, something where we've even heard the artists mention, as people or kids go by, you might send up different colors of light, which would be a wonderful, interactive way for people to enjoy being here and make something special. Lots of things being done with light these days that are affordable. So here's the overall view again. The transit on the perimeter, all crossing, connecting, under a beautiful canopy, much more than the minimal needed in allowing lots of events, surrounding a wonderful landscape garden in the middle that has lots of stormwater functions while giving people yet another reason to be here. And the more amenity and the more purpose to this central square, the more we can see development occurring around it. But most important, a great place for people to want to take transit. This is, in the end, about a better transit experience. So that's number one. The public place clearly is a way of generating more of the destination reason to be here. This is what stimulates development. Placemaking everywhere is working that way, and it's focused back on the historic station and the historic district. It's not a design that we could have done anywhere else, truly for this place. So here's the plaza plan. The Asequia you see is that blue band running across. There's all kinds of things, I could spend a lot of time talking about all the ideas that are in here, but they all are lending themselves to practical support functions, many tenant leasing opportunities, lots of food and beverage things that could help bring smaller businesses that are uniquely San Antonio to this square to celebrate, and all kinds of events that keep changing in programming. One that is, I don't know of another square like this, but it's certainly in the tradition of San Antonio. So this is it. That's an elevation on top. It gives you a feeling of how this all fits together. Doesn't look so far apart when you look at the elevation and the connection of the various elements together as one. So that's an update. Thank you for the time.
Brian, where are we on this project? What phase of development are we?
We're moving out sixty-five percent design towards ninety percent design.
Okay. So this is a design update, basically?
Design update.
And you all anticipate going to construction documents when?
Early 2014. We'll be on the street.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just real quick, I'm just wondering what explains about the six-month or so delay in terms of going to construction? Seems like a long time between now and then. Or is that, is that what you had intended all along?
That is our schedule, was to be in construction at the beginning of 2014. So we have to finish the design documents, and we have to bid the project, we have to award the project. That's going to take some time. Mr. Ponnet, thank you.
I'd just like to thank you for a very thorough presentation to the Planning and Project Development Committee and for incorporation of our comments into the presentation today and its exciting new possibilities.
Item number eight.
Thank you.
Mr. Lange.
This agenda item is to present the Board with a capital funding program update. The Board had requested that we come back and let you know where we are on this effort. This is a topic that we discussed with you back in March. Sorry about that. Proceeding, you can see that in this presentation, we're going to talk about a variety of different things, namely, the capital funding plan, the bonding process and timeline, and then related information. Back in March, again, as I noted, we did present this topic to the Board. Since then, made progress in a number of areas. We have completed the process of issuing an RFP for Investment Banking Services. We did receive twenty-six proposals, and in there, I want to mention that we had very good representation by minority firms, a number of DBEs, SB firms, WBEs, MBEs. And so, I'm told by our financial advisors that there are a number of extremely qualified minority firms that have responded, and we're going to strive to achieve very strong minority participation in several ways. One way is we're going to pick a pool. This is to select a pool of advisors at this point, or a pool of underwriting firms, rather. And this pool will have good participation by minority firms, and then when we undertake specific financings, that team selected from within the pool will provide another opportunity to make sure that we have very good minority participation. We have completed a draft preliminary official.
Let me ask a question about that, please.
Sure.
I would assume, in our drive to be our diversity, right, that this is one of those cases where a minority-owned firm just happens to be owned by a minority-owned firm, because there are plenty of these types of firms who are capable of being the lead, right? I can't hear you.
That's right. That's correct.
So say that to the Board again.
That is correct.
So when somebody says participation, I want to be very clear, this is one of those places where a minority-owned firm could be the lead.
Mr. Chairman, the reason we did not include any sort of percentage or goal Mr. Chairman, the reason we did not include any sort of percentage or goal was because we thought that would be a limiting factor.
I understand, I'm just trying to get to the point. Somebody could be the lead, not a participant.
Correct.
I know you're going to, I clearly understand the process. I know that there will be a pool. I know that there will be plenty of diversity within that pool. I also know that there will be a recommendation about how this project gets led.
We've also completed draft preliminary official statement bond documents. That's essentially the prospectus, and have worked with bond counsel and the financial advisors on that document. We'll be reviewing that draft and making some changes to it as needed, but it's, the draft is largely complete. Also have updated VIA's financial projections to reflect the latest information, and based on looking at numbers, and of course, things are subject to change, but it seems like the size of the bond issues that we'll need will be on the order of 70 million in total. We're looking at about 37.5 million in ATD bonds and about 32.4 in MTA.
I'm concerned about the direction of the market. You all are here today because this has taken so long, right? And we are new, and the combination of that new entrance into the marketplace and where things are going now makes me very nervous. So you all are going to, I would want some very clear, plain-spoken advice to us about, you know, $70 million of bonding, given what is happening in the last few weeks, particularly this week.
Do you want me to respond to that? It's true, the market has trended up somewhat more drastically than folks would expect. However, if you keep it in perspective, from a historical standpoint, rates are still fairly low. Now, there's no telling, I'm not here to say that they're going to stay at this level and may go up and go down. We really don't know that, other than...
But that's not what we were, that's not what we were basing our projections on, some historic high. We were, but what we've been looking at, right?
No, that is correct.
So...
We're still in a position to do a bond issue that would provide a good amount of funds, where the project is still financeable. Now, the thing we don't know, which is really, our advice at this point is that we really need to get an alignment settled, and need to get the cost.
Why is it not, if you, can, go back.
Well...
Go back.
Yeah, the alignment, okay.
If you basically know, right, that the scope of the project is X, right, and you basically know that our capacity is about 70 million, why are you waiting for an alignment? You got to explain it to me. I'm not being picky, I just want to know, why do they, why do we, because I've already been dealing with today, the fact that I really didn't need to wait for an alignment to do something that I should have been doing as a board member, so I want to be very clear with the board members, do we really need to have an alignment before we go forward? We know what the general scope of the project is, we're even very specific about it.
Right.
Right? That's our capacity, right? 70 million, that's what we're looking at.
I think that's a fair question. I think, and Don, I'll let you go in a second, but the real issue with the alignment...
It may be too late. Now may not be the right time to enter the market, but that's not my question.
The real issue with the alignment is that, I'm understanding, is that there's a difference in cost. So we cannot go to the rating agencies and say, here's what we're going to finance, but we don't really know exactly where it's going or exactly how much it's going to cost. We have to have a finite estimate that we can go to them to make them feel comfortable that we have a definite plan in place to address whatever the cost may be. And so until we have a more definitive scope and answers on that, to explain to the rating agencies, it would be, it would not be in VIA's best interest to go without their complete story and try to get a rating that would help us, you know, get the bonds executed in the market.
Beyond timing, what are my strategies for trying to get that borrowing cost back in line?
I think timing is probably going to be the biggest issue. We've seen a number of transactions that were scheduled to go this week get pulled from the calendar. Even here locally, a large issuer was going to be in the market, they decided to pull back their transaction. We've literally seen interest rates move about 20 basis points per day on the tax-exempt side for about the last three and a half days. I say three and a half because the last day only moved about 10 basis points, so right there, we're looking at about 60 to 75 basis points in the last week, which is pretty extraordinary. We've not seen anything like that probably in the last 30 years. So what we are seeing is some deals are getting done, but they're getting done only if they're very highly rated, and they're a very frequent and regular issuer. For VIA being a new entrant into the public market, and with the things that we're going to be doing for the first time, we think that trying to get out early is not necessarily in your best interest. And in fact, it's not a matter of your issue size. $70 million, we believe you can do, that's a financeable amount, but we've seen transactions, literally this week and last week, that were $100 million and less, that they pulled their deals back, simply because, and they were regular issuers, AAA rated in some cases, with permanent school fund guarantees, and they pulled their deals back because of the volatility. As we see the summer progress, we think that there's probably going to be a little bit of a correction. We think that there's been a little bit of an overreaction this week, and we believe that there's probably going to be some correction. I don't think we're going to see interest rates back the way they were a month ago, but we probably, I think it's realistic to anticipate maybe 20 to 50 basis points improvement from where we are today. We probably won't see that in the next 30 days, but we might see that in the August-September timeframe. And so a lot of issuers that we're looking at going are, right now, looking at that timeframe more realistically for when they may proceed with their transactions.
I just think we need to clarify that the deals that were pulled are basically, the majority of them were refundings that had a certain threshold, and because rates went up, those refundings are not being done. New money deals are getting done.
A lot of the new money deals have been canceled.
Yeah, there's been a few, but I think in...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, what?
Both primarily refundings, but a lot of new money transactions have been pulled as well. It's clear across the market. Primarily, Richard's right, a lot of them were refundings, but we're seeing new money. And the local issuer here was a new money issue, 350 million, it was pulled.
Okay. Okay, and... I mean, not okay, but okay.
Here in this slide, I've summarized some of the key assumptions, just for your reference. I don't, I won't get into the detailed numbers right here. I've got some slides that summarize the more important numbers, but that second bullet point's important. The budget's not yet fully developed or balanced, but that does not preclude us from moving forward. And then that last bullet point is also important. Ideally, should limit the operating expense growth to at least one percentage point less than the sales tax revenue growth. And the purpose of that is to have your plan conservative enough that you can absorb the layering on of the debt that we'll see in the additional years as we do bus purchases in these years coming up, where we're repeating, excuse me, where we are replacing a significant portion of our fleet. Here's a summary on this slide that shows that in the next 10 years, we have a capital spending plan that totals about $775 million, if you include FY13 in there as well, so it's really an 11-year period. And then the contractual obligation bonds, you'll note, that are associated with the vehicles that I just mentioned, total 249 million of that spending. Other bonds are going to fund 66 million of the spending. On the debt summary shown in this slide, you can see that the net proceeds from the new bond issues that are programmed into our financial model, total 312 million. That's that total under the new debt issues. We do have some existing debt as well, and so that grand total's a bit larger. You can see the layering on of the debt service, year by year, as we progress in our financing bus purchases each year, and so by maintaining at least that one-point spread, one percentage point spread that I talked about earlier, that helps enable you to take on that new debt. If you're talking about it roughly $200 million a year, and revenues and operating expense range, that, you know, 1% spread on 200 million is going to give you...
Does this financial model still work with the, this debt service is not, does not reflect the changes of this if we were to enter the market?
In our projections, we have used a 5% interest rate, so that's what this model's based on, so that's what we were hoping would be our worst-case scenario, and that's actually where we are today.
It still needs to be.
On this next slide, it's a summary of the project spending funded with the...
Either is or it isn't, right? Okay.
Project spending funded with the planned 2013 and 14 debt issuances. Two of those are in 2013, totaling, these are net amounts here, totaling about 66 million net or so. We have ATD sales tax revenue bonds that are planned to be used to fund various projects that are part of the SmartMove package, along with a little bit for a few other projects. And then in 2013, also MTA Fairbox revenue bonds. These would be used to fund a part of the streetcar costs, as well as to fund our shelter program, and then some miscellaneous items as well that I've noted. And then finally, in 2014, the only planned issuance is about $45 million to fund the streetcar vehicles. The cash flow summary shows that net bond proceeds will total about 312 million over the period shown. The VIA reserve balance at the end of September 30th, 2012, entering this fiscal year, was about 114 million. You can notice that over, you'll notice that over this horizon, our reserves actually dropped by 69 million, and so they end up at a total of about 45 million at the end of this timeframe. On the capital expenditures line, you'll see that in a variety, in a number of years, the expenditures exceed what's available for CapEx. That additional amount will either get pulled out of the reserves, or in some cases, actually lowers the amount to where we end up, again, 69 million lower than we were entering the year. We'll iron all that out as we work through the budgeting process and get numbers to where we can go to the rating agencies with a sound financial picture that'll achieve us a good rating. And then finally, the last slide in the process, in the, excuse me, in the package, is a summary of the process, and I'll let the FA speak to that and kind of what the timeline looks like going forward.
On page eight, what we try to do is offer a timeline that we know that it's achievable. One of the things we look at a lot is how fast can we go, and I think we're just a little bit dependent on VIA right now for information, but this, according in discussions with Steve and with the staff, that this schedule is doable to provide us information that is necessary. The other thing is, there's a potential, we would be looking to try to get to the market in August. The problem is typically August has not been a good market month. A lot of the investors and a lot of the folks reside up east in Boston, New York, they use August as a vacation month, and typically, we've seen the market always be, perform a little bit better after Labor Day. So that's one of the other constraints that we're looking at, but this schedule, trying to sell bonds basically in the months of September and closing in October, is what we're looking at at this point.
But in reality, we're going to get, we're going to, I still go back to, the use of the bonds is to somewhat, to some extent, dependent upon the alignment, but a lot of the use of the bond is to fund other areas of the capital improvement program. But if you're telling me you need to have a full picture because we're new to the market, okay, I get that. We'll be ready. What you're basically telling the board is, we need to be ready by August, right? And then we will judge based on the marketplace when, hopefully, there'll be some adjustment back down, and we'll be able to say, okay, now's the right time to take...
The objective is to really...
To try and enter.
Yes, sir. The objective is to really get done with...
I just want to make sure everybody understands...
Right.
...what we're trying to do here.
Yep. To get done with documents in July, and we actually have to be ready almost in August because we have to go to rating agencies in August.
If I may add one other quick item, the, Richard's points about the...
Because no matter how we got here, you're going to have very unhappy people sitting up here if things keep going the way they're going, and you have to come back and tell us, we missed our window, right?
We certainly understand that, and one of the things that we really want to do is be ready earlier rather than later, and along with that, the greater the specificity of the plan, I think the better the view of the rating agencies will have on VIA. And so that greater specificity of the, of not just the short-term plan, but the long-term plan, is going to be important when they're doing their evaluation. So not only having the alignment, but the costs, what the plans are from an operating perspective as well, all of those things will reflect significantly on management. Management is, become more and more of one of the criteria that they're looking at in terms of ratings. So yes, financial performance is there, but management and the plan for which we're going to be addressing, streetcar and the expansion of services, is going to be critical.
Any other questions? Thank you. Item number nine, Mr. Smith. MPO Policy Board composition.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. This item is to provide a briefing of the MPO Policy Board expansion and the discussions at the MPO and kind of where we are really over this last month. Earlier this month, June the 4th, Commissioners Court made a recommendation to the, I guess you'd call it the base, recommendation that came from the Work Committee was a revised 19-member board that composed New Braunfels, City of Seguin, Bernie, Comal County, and Guadalupe County, and all of those entities have, over this last month, passed resolutions of support of the 19 and to join. Bear County Commissioners Court made a recommendation as the, of the four continuing phase agreement members via Bear County, City of San Antonio, Tex-... So Bear County made a recommendation that they, we go from 19 to 21 members, and that the two additional members, one be from the VIA board and one be from the ATD board. So that actually would have two VIA and one ATD. On June the 7th, the work group then convened after this recommendation and decided to put a 60-day hold on their discussions, and so that the five entities that would be joining not to go back to their respective bodies until the four continuing phase agreement parties could get together and determine what that recommended number would be. Last week, on June 18th, Commissioners Court met and made a new recommendation, still at the 21, but they asked that one ATD board member be added because the ATD brings money to the table, and also that the Alamo RMA have a representative, because of the new legislation, that they would then add a new board member to the MPO Policy Board. So their recommendation was that it went from 19 to 21, and so today, that's where it stands, the, it's just a recommendation from one of the continuing phase agreement members, and at the MPO, it was asked that... And at the MPO, it was asked that the MPO Executive Director Sid Martinez, if he could try and convene the continuing phase agreement members to, to gather to make a recommendation back to the Policy Board.
Has that happened yet?
To my knowledge, it has not.
Okay.
As of last Monday, it had not. So...
And then let me ask another question about that too, just...
Yes, sir.
...curiosity. In terms of the, I understood that people to the north where some of this growth has occurred, that that's based on the census has to be considered.
That's correct.
But the, but the other, the other potential transit need or the collaboration with the people to the south, the counties to the south that are impacted, for example, by the Eagle Ford, which seems just in the conversations with the Tex-... is becoming increasingly more important to us. What, how does that play into this composition?
The US Census looks at the urbanized area and population, kind of a density. And that's how they define the, the size of the MPO area boundary. And so right now, they're, the Census at all points to New Braunfels, the Fair Oaks area as the urbanized area. And you look at your 20-year growth horizon in terms of population. And so that population growth kind of coincides with that, those three counties to the north. It has not pointed as much to the south, even though there is a economic demand, as you mentioned, to the south because of the, the infrastructure with the energy crisis.
So how do you deal with that?
From an MPO standpoint?
Or from an ATD standpoint?
ATD.
I mean, from a planning of corridors standpoint, I mean, what do we need to be doing?
I think from the ATD standpoint is, and you've given the direction here in terms of working with the MPO, looking at major radial arterials that we can provide transportation which to. And some of that is the work program study to look at managed lanes in those areas and look at, when we look actually at the long-range plan, you see areas where future parking rides may be, some of them are actually to the west. But I think we probably need to revisit some of those to the south because there is a lot of activity when you look at the journey to trip movements from Floridsville and Pleasanton. That there, those are potential movers in those corridors.
Right. So our job is to wait for the Director of the MPO to convene this meeting. Is there some kind of deadline we're working against?
Just the overall in that they would like to get it accomplished as soon as they can. Much of it falls in line with having a...
He should call the meeting.
Long-range plan.
He should call the meeting.
Yes.
And we, VIA stated at the last MPO meeting, we were willing at any time to meet with the other three signatory parties.
And that's diplomatically stated, we actually pushed the agenda to call the meeting as soon as possible and inquired whether those phone calls had been made upon the request earlier.
And some of the requests were who to contact. So we made sure that that was identified, that they should contact our Chairman of the Board. And if they could not reach him to call, well, now our new, our CEO. And we're willing to get that meeting started as soon as possible. And that would be the city, the county, VIA and Tex-...
Correct. Okay. Well, that's very clear. Thank you. Item number 10, Mr. Buchanan, Modern Streetcar Update.
Good evening, Chairman. I'm joined with Mr. Kyle Cahy from HNTB, part of our Program Manager. We're going to give an update on the progress we've made on the alternatives analysis this evening, talk a little bit about a couple of the alternatives, make some staff recommendations on some alternatives and provide, get some feedback, and then update you a little bit on the schedules as we move forward. So with that, Kyle.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. Thank you again for the opportunity to provide you with a briefing on our progress on the alternatives analysis effort. There's four areas that I want to address tonight. We've had a big month of public input opportunity. We'll provide a little bit of information there, talk about our recommendations regarding some alternatives. We're starting to see some formative recommendations begin. We want to share those ideas with you tonight. And then there's also some additional analysis that has been suggested through our public input opportunities. We'd like to discuss with you and to discuss also the project schedule as we're moving forward. Over the last month, two weeks ago, we had a very well-attended public meeting. And then last Monday, most of y'all were at attendance at a very well-attended, again, public forum where we had tremendous input from citizens, partners, organizations, stakeholders. Received literally hundreds of comments both at those events as well as subsequent to those events through our online opportunities to reach out and through comment cards. Two major concerns that we've brought to your attention over the last couple of months continued to be stated during those public input opportunities. One was the potential impact of streetcar on Alamo Street and therefore it called into question some of our Alamo alignments. The second area was the potential impact of streetcar through Hemisfer Park. We'll address each one of those very briefly. As you know, Alamo Plaza, we've had the opportunity to meet with the GLO and others that were key stakeholders and owners, managers of the Alamo itself. We received a number of comments from the public that continued to oppose the alignments along Alamo Street next to the World, Alamo Plaza. One particular note that we've made specific mention here is the potential impact to designating the area as a world heritage site. That application is continuing to move forward through its process. And again, that's consistent with our technical analysis where we were seeing that some of the overall costs and ridership associated with that alignment had some negative, or less promising opportunities as well. Specifically, Alamo Street was included in Alternatives 1 and 4, and I'll come back to why that's important in just one minute. For the Hemisfer Park alignments along Goliad, we've also had kind of a long conversation with various stakeholders about following, going through the park with the streetcar alignment. Over the last couple of months, we've had an increasing number of comments that indicated there was opposition to going through the park along that alignment, that the alignment along the southern edge of the park, along Caesar Chavez, provided equally good service to the park and its tenants as well. Both of these carry with it a risk to our, our schedule and budget. It takes substantial amount of time to work through those alignment issues through Section 4F, Section 106. Those are laws that deal with public parks as well as with historic properties. And that also, we also identified a risk with utilities through the parkland area. Hemisfer Park, we had the alignments going through the middle of Hemisfer Park in Alternatives 1, 2, 3, and 4. The reason that those numbers become important is that our suggestion and our recommendation at this point in time is to at least let you know that staff has started to form a recommendation regarding the elimination of the alternatives that would go through Hemisfer Park or along Alamo Street itself. The effect of that, acting on that recommendation or taking that recommendation forward would be to eliminate four of our current six alternatives, and that would be Alternatives 1, 2, 3, and 4. That would leave on the table for further discussion, Alternative 5, which we've talked about, has Martin Pecan and coming down St. Mary's, Navarro and over through, not through Hemisfer Park but adjacent to Hemisfer Park on, on Caesar Chavez. The main north-south route remains the same. Now by dropping Alamo, we remain on Broadway down to St. Mary's and Navarro to the South Town area. And Alternative 6, as you remember, is very similar to Alternative 5. The main difference being that we would continue to close the loop. This was the longest and the more costly of the six alternatives, but it would provide continuing west on Caesar Chavez, west of St. Mary's as well. So those recommendations anyway are starting to be formed. We wanted to share those with you and provides an opportunity for conversation on them. In addition to the comments that were received regarding Alamo Street and going through Hemisfer Park, the last two, last two weeks have provided an interesting discussion point regarding market and commerce streets. This would be a suggestion that was offered by several of the speakers at the public forum. We had a number of other commenters regarding that. Recall, if you will, that market commerce was one of our universe of alternatives. It was identified as a potential alignment that would, could be preserved for high-capacity transit in the future. And, but the suggestions that had come back to us suggested that we might want to give better consideration. One of the unintended consequences of eliminating the Alamo Street alignments is that we don't serve the convention center quite as directly. We don't serve the market, River Market Center quite as directly and some of the major hotel areas. So the suggestion, we felt, has merit. We wanted to bring it to you and let you know that in order to address that, it would require some additional analysis in order to bring the level of information along market commerce up to the same level of information that we've had, been able to share with you for the Martin Pecan and Chavez alignments. The schedule to be able to do that, we still remain on schedule to be able to bring to you for your consideration.
Go back to that, please.
Yes, sir.
So I think that based on the comments at our last meeting of not preserving market and commerce for rail but to use it for urban streetcars, I'm glad that you all are paying attention to that. The, you all, you heard from the financial advisors, the schedule requirement. So you're telling me this additional analysis can be completed by the end of August?
Yes, sir. We believe that as long as we, you'll see on our schedule in just a minute, the next month in July, we present that information to you so that you can act on the LPA in August.
And then I remember the people from EAK, when you were making a presentation to us, maybe as much as a year, year and a half ago, the hub of Alamo and Market, right? Where the convention center and the river came together was a very important place, right? There was one of those circles there. Am I, am I imagining that or was that, right? Can you go back or can the staff go back and, and send us a copy of that one page of you all's presentation where you all drew those circles and talked about how important that was? Okay.
Very good. So as you were asking, Mr. Chairman, we do remain on schedule for a locally preferred alternative to be presented to you for consideration in the August timeframe. In order to achieve that, we need to be, to have a little bit of time during the month of July to study the market commerce alignment, pull that information together and get that to you for consideration in July, as well as to formulate a recommendation on how to proceed. One other quick note is that at the public forum last week, we were, it was indicated that we would provide responses to all those public comments that were made at that time. We will also have that done and then, and reported on at the next meeting as well.
Great. Any questions?
That would be the July meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then just the last comment, moving, looking forward to our next steps, July, as we've already commented, is getting back the alternatives analysis results, including the additional analysis for market and commerce, coming to the Board regarding the selection of the locally preferred alternative. And then subsequent to that would be the commencement of the environmental work and the preliminary engineering on the locally preferred alternative. And then we'd identified, and this may be something we need to work out with the financial advisors, being able to produce a, an overall implementation and funding plan. This would take the information from them and be able to craft that into the overall implementation plan for the project.
Well, now that you put this up here, I got to ask you a question.
I do have a question.
Is it true, there are other cities who have filed their formal application for new starts, funding their NEPA, without being as far along as we are on this process?
Under MAP 21, the new Transportation Authorization Act, the formal application actually occurs at the time you've completed your environmental work. There's, under the old process, you could have done that earlier. And in fact, everybody pretty much did. But under the new process, which no one has submitted, to my knowledge, as of right this moment, you wait until you have your environmental document and then you can submit your project. They are wanting more accurate information, more information on your costs and how you're going to operate your system before they consider your application.
I'm familiar with the Tempe Streetcar that has been submitted. They have spent a multitude of years discussing alignments in that project and they were recently...
Tempe wasn't, Tempe wasn't mentioned.
Okay.
It's really Los Angeles and Seattle.
Okay. Those, I'm not familiar with those two.
We can certainly investigate that, find every corner that we can cut.
We're so close, it doesn't matter. Mr. Pontet.
Mr. Chair. I think obviously the challenge for his, for us has been to deal with the various positive and negative aspects of each of the alternatives. So I know as we get closer to perhaps five and six, I know that in my mind, I'm thinking, okay, but those were the costlier ones. Certainly number six, I think, was. So I think that's going to present its own series of questions as to how we're going to tackle that. So, you know, I'm glad to see that, you know, there's a funding plan element. There was a question that we asked, or I asked, I guess, at the third workshop of the HNTV folks about, okay, you know, when we talk about federalizing the project, what are the, what's the likelihood of success in doing that under the current funding environment? Because I want us to be, want this to be a win for us and not something that's contingent on things that perhaps are beyond our control. So as we get closer to the recommendation becoming finalized, I want us to not lose sight of that challenge that we have.
Dr. Gambetta.
I don't want to get too frustrated at this point, but been with the streetcar for a very long period of time. Are we, as far as the economic development components and potential, are we going to get a, for instance, just a summary sheet or a printout as the value of the properties along the various routes so that we can make that sort of analysis, at least have a benchmark for the before period and the subsequent period to demonstrate the inducing effect or the catalytic effect on economic development?
I think we're asking for some information that we maybe haven't been clear about before or, which is, it doesn't seem like we're getting the message out about once this occurs, exactly what the positive, long-term effect of these projects, these routes might be. And we haven't, it seems to us in our informal conversations that if that information were being compiled, it would start to make its way back to us the way the rest of this information is making its way back.
Sure. To answer your question directly, Dr. Gambetta, we are not doing a parcel-by-parcel analysis of the economic benefit. It was more of a global aspect and we lumped them into categories. We did not run an economic development model or an economic model or economic impact model on all the alignments, on all the alternatives. We utilized a comparative scenario to analyze each one in the same manner and same fashion.
Why not?
Why not? It would take an exorbitant amount of time and it'd probably also take a little bit more money than we had anticipated.
I would think that you can get that on an easy printout along the alignment.
Of the existing property values?
Yeah, from the Barra.
Oh, absolutely. The existing property, I thought you were talking about the projected impact of streetcar on that.
No, I would like...
Yeah. But the baseline information...
Baseline information would be of immense value.
Absolutely.
As the present worth. Secondly, we will also take into consideration, I assume, the circulator routes in existence at present time as they are formulated now. And as part of the overall analysis, any relocation of those, not only duplication but any potential relocation would also be at a cost and a re-aligning of multiple things then all of a sudden. So all that will be taken into consideration?
Yeah, absolutely, Dr. Gambetta. As we move forward, we have to look at the underlying bus network and how we integrate that or change that to reflect the alternatives selected.
Thank you.
Mr. Pitch. Mr. Pitch.
I, I just want to say in front of the full Board, a comment I made at our project and planning committee meeting. Certainly understand, get the issue of why we've moved off of Alamo Plaza with the north-south and don't disagree with it. But it really created a much clearer picture that with Alternatives 5 and 6, none of the routes go through, and this kind of piggybacks onto what the Chairman was saying a minute ago, sort of our major area for pedestrian traffic and probably ridership and that whole area at Commerce and Alamo, front of the Convention Center, the Convention Center hotels and whatnot. So if we're going to make a final decision in August, I, I don't know what we can do in the interim period, it's already late June, to really understand how that's going to be addressed. Every other major city I've been in that I ride, streetcar or light rail goes through those high-volume areas where Convention Centers are and major Convention Center hotels are. And if we're going to be moving forward with a plan that's something other than that, I really want to understand why we, why we would do that and why we're different than those other cities.
If I could, the analysis we're undertaking right now are the ridership models associated with the Market Commerce alignment so we can compare those to the other alignments, apples to apples, and also the costing, looking at the major infrastructure, all the different categories we looked at on all the other ones. We're going to try to bring the market, we are going to bring the Market Commerce alignment up to that same level so we can compare them together.
And could you provide some information in terms of other cities as well?
Sure.
You know, I mean, there's, I can rattle off of a bunch of them where the ridership is, but where, where streetcar light rail, where it has been built, might not go by a Convention Center and why, why does it work in those other communities? I'd like to especially know that.
I, I think one of the other changes that has come to light over the last couple of weeks has been the actual development of the Convention Center and the plans there. There was plans for a major entrance and exit on the south end of the Convention Center that we were serving into the Convention Center, even though we weren't on Market Commerce. That entrance is looking like it is only an employee entrance slash exit at this particular moment in time as they are further developing their concepts and plans. So that warrants even more the concept of moving possibly up to Market Commerce to look at that alignment and serving the Convention Center.
Anyone else? Thank you all.
Thank you, Chairman.
The time is now 6:55 PM and the VIA Metropolitan Transit Board of Trustees will officially go into a closed executive session. The items we will discuss during this executive session are as follows. Item number 11, entitled Funding Request and Proposed Inter local Agreement with the City of New Braunfels, which is an executive section item pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, entitled Consultation with Attorney. And Item 12A, entitled Legal Briefing Personnel, which is an executive session item pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, entitled Consultation with Attorney. And Section 551.074, entitled Personnel Matters. All persons who are authorized to attend this executive session, please proceed to the small conference room. It is now 7:37 PM and we are officially coming out of a closed executive session regarding Agenda Items 11 and 12A. No deliberations of public policy or vote-taking occurred during the executive session. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. Today with us as our guests from the City of New Braunfels is Robert Camarino. Robert is the interim City Manager in the City of New Braunfels and he relates to you, Jeff, as being the interim and hopes that things will turn out the same for him. And also is the, and I think I have maybe your title right, but the Director of Planning, Shannon Manningly, is here. And then also with ACOG, Bill Mosley.
We simply wanted to come out of this executive session and take a moment to recognize your presence here in our meeting and to tell you that we look, very much look forward to working with the City of New Braunfels to finding some new solutions given our new ecology for your citizens. And we don't know exactly what that means, but we know that you've been working closely with our staff and so we look forward to those continuing conversations and we'll work together to make sure that your service will not be interrupted and, and that any way that we can work together to innovate and improve what you're able to offer to your citizens, we want to definitely be a part of. So we know that you're going to go back and meet with the members of your City Council, possibly as soon as this weekend, and we want to, to make sure that you carry the message back to your City Council of our willingness to find solutions going forward. Appreciate you taking the time out of your schedules to sit through this lengthy meeting and to be with us today. We look forward to continuing our collaboration. Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
I have a motion by Ms. Thompson Garcia and a second by Mr. Miller. All in favor? We stand adjourned. The time is now 7:40 and I will officially call this meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Advanced Transportation District to order. Item number, as there is no item number two, right? We'll consider item number three, our consent agenda. I have a motion for approval by Mr. Miller and a second by Ms. Thompson Garcia. All in favor? Motion passes. Item number four, clay. We've covered that agenda item in our previous agenda. Do we have item number five? No legal briefings at this point?
No.
I don't have an item number five. That covers our agenda for the Advanced Transportation District?
Yeah.
I have a motion for adjournment by Ms. Thompson Garcia. Do I have a second? We stand adjourned.